Please call and roll.
Winters.
Here.
Lahr.
Here.
Dowling.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Stelling.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Item number four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the emergency meeting of December 16th, 2022. Item B, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, December 19th, 2022. Item C, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, December 22nd, 2022. Item D, approval of the minutes of the special meeting, December 27th, 2022. Item E, approval of claims in the amount of $327,070.98 and payroll expenses of $183,312.22. Item F, discussion action to approve invoice 479-3086 to ASAP Energy, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $36,198.17 and invoice 481-3629 to ASAP Energy, not to exceed the amount of $32,152.09. Those are both for airport fuel.
I would motion to approve the consent agenda amending item C to say special meeting of December 22nd, 2022.
I second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Ms. Beer to approve the consent agenda amended to read that the item C is the special meeting of December 22nd, 2022. Is there any further discussion? Please call and vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Lahr.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. In the interest of time, if council members, if you have a report to make on these items or questions that you have on the items of the reports from staff, please go ahead.
I can report on the finance committee from today. To start with, we had a really great meeting today. We got the financials back. This is as of December 31st, 2022, and for the first time since...
When in 2020?
At least January.
January of 2020, roughly. The general fund has a positive full cash balance, which means that all arrears to the various funds that were a total $2.8 million have been effectively paid off and accounted for in approximately two and a half years. So that was great news to have. There is, I think, still some money that needs to be transferred into the airport account that hasn't been transferred there yet, but it is accounted for within the funds and still cash. And that's above and beyond the 5% that we've been sitting aside, so we actually have a start on the capital improvement fund now as well. We also, let's see, we have a total cash balance of approximately $3.6 million. We're right on track for revenues in both the general fund and the ADA, with expenses being below slightly where we would expect to be at this point. The AUA is actually behind on revenues significantly for budget, but part of that is expected to be we still have budgeted loan revenues that we don't anticipate to receive at this point. So once we take all of the revenues and expenses for the loan out, then we should actually see the percentage of revenues increase. Month of December, we had good sales tax collection, total $434,352.79. And then I think the last thing, we are looking at renewing some CDs and also actually putting some money from the ADA into a new CD. Been a while since we got them to do that.
Any questions for Mr. Winters?
I guess this was just an assumption. Did you fill Connor's position on the finance committee?
Yes.
I just didn't know, for sure.
All right. Any other reports to give? Okay, I will briefly go over some things for the mayor's report. We are, we did have our meeting with REAP, and we will be starting final engineering on a project for the Locust Street water line. Our hope, that's a $75,000 grant that we received, and we've got a $13,000 in kind, which we will do with labor, to meet the requirements of that grant. But the hope is that we will be able to get from College to Eighth Street completed with that $75,000. And so we're starting the engineering and moving forward with that project. We received word that we did receive the $1 million ARPA grant. This is a grant, this is not tied to a loan, this is just grant money, $1 million through OWRB, the Water Resources Board, and that will be for a 16-inch supply line that is in between here and the well field, most likely in the Hope Town area. That should give us a mile, maybe more, of 16-inch transmission lines. So that's good. We'll, we haven't yet really gotten, we just found that out late last week. So we'll be getting started on the final planning and stuff like that to use that money. There will be a budget workshop I plan on attending in Stillwater. It's put on by Crawford and Associates, as well as the Municipal League. That'll be on the 27th. Next week, we will start our budget process with our department heads getting their 2023, 2024 fiscal year budget items ready for our consideration. The Congress of Mayors is coming up with the Municipal League and the Mayor's Council of Oklahoma. That'll be the 9th and 10th of February in Midwest City at the REAP Conference Center, as well as the State Capitol. Council members are invited, so if anybody would like to attend, please let me know as soon as you can, so we can get your registrations and hotel reservations. This would have been under the airport report, but I'll go ahead and report that we are waiting on, we are, we have approved moving forward the lighting project. Between the FAA and the engineering, it's just not ready to, you know, go out for bid yet. But as soon as that's ready to go out for bid, we're going to go out for bid and get that project going. That will be funded upfront with airport funds and reimbursed by the FAA. And we also reported this is going to end up being a, we're not sure what the solution is yet, but there's been some ground heaving at the airport, which has affected the runway. And so we're working on a plan to get that remedied. It's not affecting traffic at this time, and Derek caught it early, so we're working on making sure that we get that taken care of before it becomes an issue. Ideally, we're fixing the runway, at the same time we're putting lightings in, so that we're not down for a long period of time. I talked with Gail Thomas from OITA. If you'll recall, she's the person that is doing the CIP grant through OITA. That'll be the capital inventory, capital improvement plan and inventory that we approve in the fall, moving forward with that. But we'll be, Drake, I'll be getting with you to set up time. She's looking, wanting to start with water sewer stuff, so we'll get that going. And I want to give some thank yous out, just real quick. Bill Johnson, Correctional Center, they sent some help out with our water line repair out on, I'm not sure what the road is, but it's the line that feeds the prison and some of the businesses out there on the east side of town, or outside of city limits, but east of town. Last night, the city of Moreland, we called over there. We had a sewer line issue here in town. Our equipment is not working, so the city of Moreland, you know, within 20 minutes, they sent their stuff on the road, got it here, five-minute job, and then they went back to Moreland. So it was, it was that, or waited on an emergency contractor, which wasn't going to dispatch until 8 o'clock this morning. So got that sewer line opened up before a lot of people even went to bed last night. So that was a good deal. And then Daniel mentioned the general fund cash balances. And I just want to say that that's a huge, huge accomplishment, and I want to make sure and express my appreciation to all of the city staff, past and present, that have been part of the sacrifice and the extra effort to help us get things back to where they should be and moving in a better direction. So it has not been easy for our departments to work with the equipment that is, you know, sometimes failing, maybe the manpower that they, you know, need and things like that. But all of those sacrifices have had a positive impact on our cash situation, to the point that that is remedied well ahead of what we had scheduled for it to be, you know, taken care of. I'm happy to answer any questions.
The ground heaving is part of what all the water leaks we've had, or is that the assumption?
We haven't, we haven't had any, you know, technical study done on it, but everywhere, almost everywhere, there's been a break. It's been at a junction where either something is tied in, whether it's another line, or a valve, or a joint in the pipes. When the ground moves, so the summer, the ground had sucked away from the pipes, and that was causing the pulsating, and the pipes rattling in the, in the ground was causing those breaks. And now we're feeling like the ground is moving back in around the pipes and causing, you know, seals to be not perfectly aligned, because many of these lines aren't actually broken. It's just where the connections are made that the seals have become compromised. And so that is, I don't, Drake, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I...
It's just the matter of the ground shifting so much, we're so dry right now, the change in weather, I mean, it's, we're just, we're not really getting, the line's shifting from point to point, so it's moving all the time. When it gets hot, it goes even more, and it's dry, and I mean, moisture in the ground so the ground's not staying intact as good, and so that's kind of what that's about.
So you don't think it would be air, air hammers, aerosolized that, or?
I mean, that could be some of it. I mean, from shutting down like the 16-inch and stuff like that, you're always going to have air, they're just, you can only open so many hydrants that leave air off. Some of that can be caused from it, but the majority of it is going to be just from your shifting in your line.
And, you know, many, it's visibly apparent when some of these lines have been uncovered, and you see a pipe that's kind of cockeyed into the, you know, whether it's the valve that it's going into, or what have you. It's visibly apparent that things aren't lined up properly. Any other questions? Item number seven is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Anyone that would care to make a comment, we'll give you two minutes. Please approach the podium and identify yourself. All right. Item number eight is discussion and action regarding the sale of real property located at Block 5, original town of Alva, Woods County, as requested by Jay Lohman, manager on behalf of Wheeler Brothers Grain Company, LLC. If you'll recall, we approved a contract earlier, maybe late fall, early winter, that there was going to be a sale of, we approved sale of property. We did not get approval on that contract with Wheeler Brothers. We did not include all of the land that they were seeking to purchase. So we've gone back and surveyed all of the land. The part that we didn't include, it was an oversight, we didn't realize that it wasn't already their property. It is essentially the strip of land that runs in between your main operation there on Chock Top?
Right behind the office.
Right behind the office, and then their storage bin is just immediately north. So we have surveyed all that property now. And Jay, would you like to, or anybody, I guess?
I'm going to let Todd be, or I'll give it to you.
I'll, for the record, what?
I'm Todd Lafferty, co-CEO of Wheeler Brothers. And I've got a visual. Is it okay if I hand this out?
Yeah, that's fine.
So on this visual, you'll see what I marked is the flat, that's the flat storage, and there's a diagonal line. That was included in the original survey with some of the land that's to the north of that. What was excluded was the horizontal line between what's marked as Elevator A and the flat. And when we first contacted Burlington Northern about this, they told us that that was our industrial track, and we were welcome to pull it up. But then they sort of switched their position, and then we found out that if the tracks haven't been used for a period of time, then it reverted to the city of Alva, which is where we got Alva involved in it. And so frankly, if I stand here, I don't know whether that's ours or Alva's, but we don't want to build something on it with that being a question mark. And so that's what we wanted added into it. So if the city has an interest in it, then we would like it to be part of the conveyance, and then it doesn't hurt anything if it doesn't have an interest in it. So that's, that's kind of our position. But what we're wanting to do is tear down that flat and build a concrete bin and have a dump pit between Elevator A and the new concrete bin, and also conveyance, where we can transfer grain between the new bin and Elevator A. So that's an extremely important part of this project. So, and we want to be fair to the city. I know Jay had offered to pay for the additional survey costs, and I think the city went ahead and did that, but we want to be fair to the city on this.
So we have incurred approximately, and I think the invoices may have been included in the pack, no, they weren't, okay, but we, you know, get that for you, but it's approximately $2,500 that we have in survey costs. When we approved this back in the fall, survey costs were not included in the sale price, but the fair market value of the diagonal section and then north was at $3,000, I believe. And then, like I said, all that was excluded was just this, this line here that he's highlighted that's horizontal.
Just the highlighted horizontal line is what is being added?
Is what is being added.
Okay.
You know, I see this as economic development opportunity in our community. When we approved it last time, I think we included that as part of the discussion. We wanted to make sure and get both parties here to kind of, you know, have the discussion so that we can put together a contract for sale that will be what everybody's expecting. So I guess, you know, my recommendation would be that we go ahead and do that for the $3,000 plus the fair market value for the, which has not been assessed yet, for the horizontal line and the survey cost. But I would also want to take into consideration that the city of Alva has not had any maintenance expense on that land ever. And Wheeler Brothers has been the party to, you know, mow and keep that property maintained ever since the railroad quit using it.
So is our original motion basically got to go away since they...
That contract, yeah, that contract did not get signed, it did not take effect. So it's off the table, and we'll do a new contract.
So you're pretty sure that the original amount was $3,000, and then total, total of the survey costs between 500?
Approximately $2,500. What I would, what I'm hoping to come out of this is, it's going to, we'll come to a dollar amount that Wheeler Bros. is okay with, we're okay with, and we'll have Drew put that in a contract. It's less than $2,600, but more than $2,500 on the survey costs.
I have a copy of the old contract that we didn't sign, and it was .87 acres for $3,000. And that was not including the horizontal track.
That's, that's, that would be the larger of the two tracks.
What did you say the intended use of the property was?
We're wanting to tear down the flat and put in a concrete bin, and then have an additional dump pit and conveyance between the new bin and Elevator A, our existing elevator. It'll provide additional grain storage. It also won't be as labor intensive as far as those flats are pretty hard to empty out, and it's having upright storage in concrete's always better. It's easier to keep grain.
And you currently own the flat?
Yes.
But not the lane that it sits on? Or is it just the highlighted two tracks is all we're talking about? The two tracks and the original legal description that's in the contract includes some of the land north of the horizontal, I mean, of the diagonal track. So... So that's that .87 acres that Jay was referring to. And then the new part would just be that horizontal. But we, we, we actually own that little triangle piece of land that the flat sits on.
So basically, the property doesn't join each other consistently?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a skip in there that you don't actually know?
Yeah, there's actually, on each, there's that horizontal piece and the diagonal piece, and we don't have that. And so it makes it, it makes it more difficult. And in fact, without having that horizontal piece, we won't be able to do the project.
Also, whenever Angelica was the city manager, I asked her, when we put the survey together to begin with, that if it was unclear that we needed to own or wanted to own everything that we did in between Streets Fourth and Fifth, from Santa Fe to Mill. So that was be clear enough, the two railroad spurs, and then the triangle land that we did not have. And somehow that survey...
Yeah, there was...
We kind of got a miscommunication, I think it was in the minutes. There was a miscommunication on the horizontal track and did not get it. But that was the agreement that we made.
What do you say, Doc, what are you planning on putting in there?
Well, well, what we call dump pits where the, a truck pulls over and raises its gate, and then the grain comes down, and then it goes into a leg, and...
Okay, that's what.
Yeah, no, it's not like a trash dump. It's just elevator lingo.
Yeah, like what shaft can be dumped? I think, I used to take it out to dump all the time.
Yeah, no, this would be, this would be weed or corn or...
Basically, a pit to convey it to the...
Right, right.
So for this motion, Kelly, do we just, since we don't really know estimated prices, since we need to go back and add, get a survey on that track, do we just?
Just reimbursement of the survey costs, like the original sale price, reimbursement of the survey cost?
I think we've got some leeway in here to, if you wanted to do the survey costs, the fair market value, and if you wanted to give some consideration to the maintenance that's been provided by Wheeler Brothers over the years, I think, and I don't know if you could put a dollar amount on that or not, but, you know, it has some value. And so I think, I know the fair market value that has already been surveyed, which is the majority of the property that's under consideration, was at $3,000, as was presented previously to the council. And the survey costs were, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact number. It was between $2,500 and $2,600 for both surveys.
One of them was $14,350, and one of them was $11,500, so 26, 25.
Okay, 26, 25. Thank you, Gail.
Do you know how long we've had it since the railroad passed it on for the city?
I did not have that answer.
Been a couple?
It's been decades.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
A couple decades at least.
Probably more than that.
When we arrived to the assessed fair market value, who did that assessment?
Murrow Real Estate.
I think we'd have to get that little track appraised as well before we could put that into the contract, so...
Did they charge us for the assessment of the property? Is there any cost incurred on that?
It's not much.
I think it was like a hundred bucks.
So we just need to table it until we get that?
I want to leave here with a number so I can put a contract together, and I think they do too.
We've been working on this since August of 1920, or 2021, so...
Is there any, just for the sake of the question, is there any advantage or expectation that other people should be able to have an attempt to acquire this property? It certainly seems like they can use it the best. I mean, it's right next door to them.
Our obligation, when it comes to opportunities for economic development, is that we can legally sell, or sell property at fair market value.
Yeah, I think, I think on top of that, the only other issue is, is there any future use that the city's going to have? And I think, I think at the last meeting, we decided, you know, with that triangle, there was certainly no use, it hadn't been used up to this point, no use in the future. And I would say with that little strip there, they're not going to be used there either.
Kind of makes it a little bit off opportunity, or anything like that.
What's that, sir?
Just the highlighting green is all we're talking about.
Just the bottom ones, the new, that part that wasn't included. But this was the original.
So you guys own the diagonal?
Yes.
No, that was what was included in the original contract.
That diagonal plus the rest of the block, right? And I understand...
Yeah, it was...
All that was included?
Yeah, it was .87 acres.
If you close the green lines, that's what they currently own, the inside of those green lines.
And then also to the south of the horizontal line.
Right, yeah.
I'd make the motion that we submit a contract for sale for the $3,000 and reimbursement for appraisal cost.
Appraisal or survey?
Survey, thank you. Survey.
Paul Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Stelling and a second from Mrs. Beer to prepare a sale agreement in the amount of $3,000 plus survey costs for the property located at Block 5, original town of Alva, Woods County, as requested and as presented with Wheeler Brothers Grain Company. Is there any further discussion?
And that fulfills our requirement legally of the sale at fair market value, considering we have not assessed the value of the additional property?
I think we probably want to, we have to have that included, the fair market value of that strip. So that's not, that's not added in, in the original fair market value, that strip there, so we're having to...
Could that be like consideration of our maintenance of how many years we've been taking care of it?
taking care of it?
Well, actually, we could have been, I mean, we sold basically everything north of there. That little strip basically kind of worthless unless somebody come in and just cause an issue. So basically my motion was to, to include that.
Well, we still have an obligation to fair market value. The question then is, is the, are the expenses incurred by Wheeler Brothers over the years justification of that?
And then so, how can you answer that question if you don't know? You know, it's something small.
You don't have the fair market value, you can't really determine that again.
I mean, I imagine that in the law that it probably did, but...
I mean, I could also see Randy's argument that theoretically, I think it was Randy, maybe it was, that the value was virtually zero of that property.
Nobody's going to go in and buy that, that little railroad strip right there between, between all the...
Other than the cost of trouble. Other than the cost of trouble, yes.
I just want to, legally though, we have an obligation to, to find out what the fair market value of it is.
Yep.
And I think we can, I think the council could consider the maintenance that Wheeler Brothers has done on it, but we would have to know what that is.
And, and I think, you know, the contract will still have to come back to City Council.
So how about, I mean, I know we have a standing motion, so we, we have to vote on the motion as, as standing. But if we were to, to word it and apply for, um, as fair market value, um, of the property and then provide some credit, I don't know the number, but some credit towards what, you know, he had asked for the reimbursement on the survey. Reduce the request of reimbursement on survey to account for the maintenance. And then you're fulfilling your fair market value of the land. I don't, we don't have any obligation to recoup the costs of the survey, do we, from a legal standpoint?
No, we just got to get fair market value for the property.
And then it kind of covers everything?
Yeah. How mu, how many acres is that?
It was...
.89?
The triangle to the north of the...
The bigger one, the bigger one that...
No, just the parting question. We don't know that.
Hold on, I've got the survey, hold on. It probably will. Less than a tenth of an acre.
And how much does his land belong to?
Well, potentially not, it's slightly determined.
That's why I asked you to do the assessment.
Okay. This says .57 acres more or less.
It's a half an acre.
No.
Oh, the total.
Yeah.
Well, what was the original? Somebody said the day...
I think the original was .87 and then that would add another .5 to it. So...
Well, it's probably less than a tenth, what you're saying is basically.
That wouldn't be .5 if it rested here, that's all.
.05, I think, or less than a tenth of an acre for that strip.
I'll do it.
Just going off the survey.
And that was the most recent survey?
Yep.
That's the total area.
Yeah, just what the triangle is.
That's the total area inside the triangle that you've drawn.
Yeah.
That's what they were got.
That's what they already have.
But we need to figure out what this diagonal line is for fair market...
Horizontal.
Yeah, horizontal, sorry.
Did they survey the correct area the second time? Whether or not they included the...
It looks like they surveyed too much the second time.
So they surveyed what we already own?
You know, um, if you, if you just quick claim that, then it's not going to hurt anything because I mean, if we own it, then, you know, I mean, as long as it includes the horizontal strip, but if it includes more than that and it's a quick claim, you can't convey in a quick claim any more than what you own. And so I don't know that we would need to have the surveyors go back out and re-survey to exclude what we already own.
Nobody can use this but these guys, I mean.
They're just going to...
Yeah, they, we, I mean...
We, legally, he said we have to have a fair market value strip.
And that's why, I mean, if we don't have the cert, the property, the property survey problem, that might come back on.
Yeah.
That's irritating.
Yeah. Another month, month to...
How long does it take to do a survey?
Too long?
Survey's longer than the appraisals.
The appraisal won't take long.
No.
But don't appraise it past a month?
I could have him appraise it without the survey, couldn't I?
Well, if we knew, if we know what it is we got right there.
I know appraisal will satisfy it as well, since it'll give us the cost.
Since, and I don't think he needs to come out and see it again. He's seen it. It's on the paper. I need him to amend his survey document to just include what you have or what you're seeking.
Right, exactly. Which is the horizontal track.
So that complicates, can we actually take action? We, we still could without the survey if we, if the value is fair market value?
If we said fair market value and we said any number between, I'd say, I would say you could pick a number that, that, that you feel best describes our cost for the survey versus their cost for the maintenance. Whether that's a wash, whether, I mean, you could...
I think you might be at a wash on, uh, what the fair market value of that is. So let's say that comes back at $1,000, that you could, in theory, say they provided that enough over however many years.
I just don't know how we would do that tonight.
Right.
To have a contract until we have the survey. And so if we provide a credit towards the cost of the...
Survey.
Survey, then we're addressing both things and can have a contract tonight.
We just do a special media and just come back and get it done?
We can do that. I, I'd like to know what, what you need in the contract though. Is it, and, and you know, we do have a motion on the table, um, to prepare a contract for $3,000 plus survey costs. We will have to take action on that. That's not to say we can't have another motion right after that, that...
To include the strip or...
So my motion, I was intending that, I mean, like all inclusive, that, I mean, if Drew says it, I mean, basically that has to be addressed separately.
I think we've got, I think we've got to have that appraisal before we can do it. Now we could, I think you could...
But we can get the appraisal and, and get the contract drawn up.
And then bring it back.
And then bring it back.
Got a special.
But I, I would ask it then that with the motion that is on the table, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Once we take care of this motion, can there be one, just, I mean, backwards, I mean, to, to draw up the contract for sale, fair market value plus survey costs or something? And then, which would include?
Well, that's the motion that you made.
Well, but to some type of language where it would say that it includes that, basically we're going to draw up the contract for that triangle, rectangle, excuse me, uh, for sale at fair market value plus survey costs, to where it includes that.
You can, you can make a motion that is worded fair market value plus survey costs if that's what you want to do. You can make that motion.
Do away with the most...
What I would want to know is that, is that a, an agreement you guys would accept? Is there going to be offset for maintenance?
Not the way he worded it.
Well, there's a... I think you could word it, original, original triangle plus the strip, fair market value plus the cost of survey, taking into consideration, uh, the maintenance that's been on it and then, then we'd have a final contract we'd bring back to the council.
But you're not going to do another survey? We're not?
Right.
I don't think we need to do that.
I don't think we need another survey. It's been surveyed.
I think the surveyor can go in and look at what he's already done and, and say, okay, card on this little section.
That we already have.
So let's, let's take a vote on the current motion. Can we do away with it and then basically come back with?
Yeah, we need to...
So if it's all inclusive...
If, if you agree to move forward with another motion, you're going to vote no. If you agree with the original motion, you're going to vote yes.
No.
All vote?
Stelling?
No.
Bear?
No.
Lar?
No.
Dowling?
No.
Bowman?
No.
Brooks?
No.
Swallow?
No.
Winters?
No.
Okay, now I would entertain another motion. Randy, let me see if I can sum this up for you. I, I, I believe the motion we're looking for is to prepare a sale contract with Wheeler Brothers Grain for the fair market value of the area discussed, excluding the property already owned by Wheeler Brothers, uh, with a sale price that is fair market value as determined by a professional in real estate. The survey costs and reduced by an amount not to exceed the survey costs, consistent with the cost of maintenance on the property provided by Wheeler Brothers.
That, but I wish I had, how, how's it going to be determined what maintenance was?
They'd just have to tell us.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll, we'll agree with whatever you all recommend.
I, I feel like we could simplify this.
Just split the survey costs.
I don't think you even need to put survey costs in there, but that's not what Randy was asking for.
Well, that was the original going.
Do we, do we feel like the maintenance costs and the, and the survey costs are equivalent?
I would say probably in our favor.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to sell, to, to draft a contract for the sale of this land, um, at fair market value as determined by a real estate professional.
Second. I said simpler than what you...
Trying to accommodate my...
That's too hard.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Winters, second by Mr. Stelling, to prepare a contract for sale of the, the land that located in Block Five, um, as discussed, excluding the property presently owned by Wheeler Brothers at fair market value as determined by a real estate professional.
Does anything even mention that basically about the survey cost or offset by, I'm not trying to make it more difficult?
I don't think it has to be.
Okay, okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Please call the...
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Upstate.
Lar?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Hopefully we're getting this cleared up.
I would be excused.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, items number nine and 10 are, we'll, we'll do them individually, um, but with nine being presentation from, uh, Jeffrey Wilcox, Bill Shy, and Kevin Carrington from Corin, Maine regarding the city of Alvin Water Meter Project and item 10, presentation from UTS, which would be Jeff Schultz and, I'm sorry. Okay, um, regarding the city of Alvin Water Meter Project. Essentially, we approved a bid at the last meeting and I, I think we've, we've learned some things since that bid that, that might have affected the council decision. I just want to make sure that council members are fully informed, um, of what the delivery expectations are with the meter systems. I, I, when we, when the council originally discussed this and took action, the, um, information that we had would have indicated that, uh, the delivery date for both products were going to be relatively the same. We received new information, um, during a pre-construction phone conference that would potentially indicate otherwise. And so I've asked, first, Corin, Maine to come in and, and talk about, um, what we can expect for a delivery, um, of the Neptune system and, and then we'll hear from UTS. And if the council would choose to, um, affirm, actually, there wouldn't even have to be a, a motion to affirm, it's already done. But if the council would choose to continue, um, with the Neptune system and install, um, no further action would need be taken on, on these, uh, other agenda items that are relevant. But would the council, um, choose to rescind that, then further action would be required. So, um, Bill, Jeff, would you care to share, share the information with the council as you shared with us earlier last week?
Absolutely, Mayor. I wasn't here for that phone call, I should have been involved in that, obviously. So what I told you prior at, uh, our last meeting was 34 weeks, eight months. That was previously arranged with Neptune and with my bosses and just with the, the process that we do. And that's, that's what that process is. They're a special order since you're half inch. So I thought that was pretty good actual, uh, delivery time for that, but nothing has changed. Um, and I would have been glad to have been involved, I was on vacation last week, so I apologize for that.
Well, and I think the information that, that we were working off of was an indication that there was a, um, an existing inventory, um, from a, another job that wasn't going to happen.
But you're the only, I believe the only one now that has five eighths by half. So five eighths by three quarters is, is the, is the standard in that. That could have happened and we could have got that earlier. We're going to pull from another job, absolutely. So we'll work our best to get it in here sooner than that. But just right now with the, the world we're living in, it is, it is rough with that being a special order. That's what it's going to, that's pretty much what they're giving us, so...
So help me out, 34 weeks puts us where?
That's eight months.
Eight months. Does council have any questions?
I, I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can wait that long with our meters there.
That's why, I, that's why I wanted to have this discussion.
That's at the end of the year pretty much.
I'm actually in depression that if we have a meter out, then we can't replace it, can we? Do we have that?
We have a few in stock, but very few.
But there, I mean, Drake, I think, is running out faster since that company doesn't answer anymore and we can't replace them. I mean, they can't keep functioning like this, 30 pages of meter readings, that's not sustainable.
And I, I, I didn't mention this earlier in my finance report, but there was discussion during the finance committee meeting in regards to that the under-reporting of revenue within the utility authority could very well, we don't know this for certain, hasn't been dived into, but very well could be related to the failing meters and loss of accuracy. So it's potentially costing us money not having the records.
I mean, it's costing us money on that, but and, and all the labor costs, I mean, to go manually read.
We manually read for a long time, though.
We manually read and we had a guy that's been doing it for 45 years, that was the only difference between that. I mean, teaching new guys where meters are, there's a lot of meters in a lot of different places and...
Now they're getting stuck in holes with the ground shifting or whatever, you know, whatever's happening with our lines and key breaking, so, I mean, that's just... So that's just a lot of labor costs.
Whether we've manually read or not, we've paid for a system that we shouldn't have to manually read. And therefore, the labor costs are additional burdens on our budget. The question is, is the additional burden worth the wait?
Well, I guess the next question that needs answered is, is the alternative? What's the delivery timeline on the alternative? I don't recall.
So that's why Jeff's here. If you're satisfied and don't have any further questions for Corin, Maine, I'll move on to that item.
Do you have a question? Is there any way that, I mean, you say you're eight months out of there. Any way you could get us some meters additionalized if we need to replace them in our system as far as that goes? Is there any stock at all that you have that we could go as far as that?
So we can't even replace the failing or failed meters at this point?
No, I mean, we could. I mean, if you're running out of meter, but still it's gotta be five eighths by half. So that's just not a stocking.
Right.
Meter for any company, basically.
Nobody else has enough stock to stop it.
It's just gonna be rough on that part. The only alternative would be for you to buy new setters and that's a lot of money.
Can't do that. That's, that's two hundred dollars, two hundred dollars a meter.
Be better quarter million dollars.
Well, it's it, well, it's two hundred. That's setter.
You replaced your settings.
That's just material cost. That's just, that's not even your labor.
Right.
To potentially change the size of the meter.
That doesn't, that doesn't count the.
To change the size. To change the size of the meter within the meter box itself to a more standard meter. There is, there's an additional problem with that alternative is the lead time on those items are gonna be as long or longer.
Even further out?
Because brass is not very easily.
It's on everything, brass, pipe, fitting, clamps, repair, anything that you, it's a challenge today.
So getting away from the half inches is unreasonable. I mean, trying to modify it to three quarters, so it's basically, the cost is.
But totally. Normally, you could, you could probably do it and it would be in your project scope. But with today's delivery times and the cost has went up tremendously, it's just not cost effective.
I mean, even if you said you wanted those setters, I mean, I.
Absolutely.
We're just gonna speak openly because we're all in the same boat here. So even just brass setters, if you said tomorrow you want to do that, you'd probably be, I'd say, a year out to get, to get that many setters changed. I mean.
I think it's something that, you know, if any of us are sitting in this room, you know, fifteen, twenty years from now, when it's time to replace the next, or by the next meters, I think that's part of the discussion we have to have. Because it.
They're just balls.
How many communities have the by half?
There might be one or two.
There's a handful, but it's not, it's, they've been on the process since eighty-five, changing to three quarters.
They're not solid. Yeah, they're not solid, so they've probably been working over the years to try to change.
Poughkeepsie has some, Muskogee has some, McAllister has some, but in large quantities for the entire town to have it.
This is pretty rare.
Five eighths by half was created to reduce the amount of flow that a consumer can have. As homes have gotten bigger, plumbing fixtures are desire for more water in the homes, showers, we want nineteen thousand nozzle showering this. It's a, it's an obsoleted size.
Very good point.
Daniel? When you're stopping loss, is that not reading properly also? So some of the meters aren't reading properly, so we might, there may be.
We don't know.
We don't know. But I mean, instead of us taking time to go read the meter, that, that number may be inaccurate.
Accurate.
Yeah, or it could be misread and not read accurately. It could be that the meter is not tracking the water flow accurately, so what it's reading isn't accurate.
So it's not just the labor of sending someone out to walk it and read. And we already know the, the, the published accuracy rates of our meter is less than the published accuracy rates of either of the meters that we're considering.
And I mean, just last month, what, we're at forty-seven percent failed?
Close.
So I mean, every month it's ticking up, so that's also gonna play in it.
And that's the radio that's failing. The meter is, is reading what the meter should be reading. It's just not an accurate meter, it's not as accurate a meter as what we expect out for this bid project.
So what's the delivery time on the more common meter? Then?
Well, we would have potentially some in stock and already some ordered, but to get twenty-six hundred meters, you'd be looking at the same timeframe, the same.
You'd be able to start it, but finish the project.
Now, our installer is also gonna charge more if we have him come in at a different time and mobilize once and then go back and come back and mobilize again because we have meters coming in at different times.
So we would be at eight months regardless of the size.
Potentially.
But not more if it's going after great question, but the more common.
There may be an alternative.
We get two hundred at a time, three hundred at a time, four hundred at a time, things of that nature. We pull from other orders, we're trying to do our best.
The larger diameter meters are not as long a lead time. It's not anywhere near, it's a fraction of the total number of meters you have. They're gonna come in before the majority of the residential meters come in. But we really can't start the project until we have the majority of the meters so our installer can mobilize once without charging us additional costs.
I think you're right about fifteen, twenty years from now, right? Hopefully, somebody's around to remember.
We're contemplating it as we maybe have to replace a broken meter.
Well, to be more common size. Let's go ahead and, any other questions for Corin, Maine? All right, let's go ahead and have UTS give us kind of what you're anticipating for delivery.
So we was unaware of five eighths by half requirement until it just got spoken. So that wasn't in the specification of the job or the bid specs as quoted. So, but that being said, we don't know our number of five eighths by half in stock. We do keep some, we do have current customers that purchase that size of meter. It is very uncommon. Three quarter inch is the more common. And in that timeframe, our lead times are anticipated for the meter.
For the three quarter?
Three quarter.
Yeah, so about five months on the three quarter. So that's, this is a scenario that's kind of happened with the chip shortage. So twenty twenty, we were at a year. Last year, we were at eight months. And now, most recently, we just shipped our first shipment to Poughkeepsie, which is a big job. Those came in about five months. We may have some supply on the half inch. I would need time to go research that because we have several different areas in this country that we can.
I think we have sixteen branch locations that we'd want to look at first.
I don't have any half inch in Oklahoma City. I do know that, but we may have some in the other areas. Wouldn't be a lot, but it would be enough maybe to get started, maybe some of the worst areas we could put them in.
And then another consideration you could have also, based on the difference of the contract price, I think we were three hundred and forty thousand lower, is, you know, if you wanted to do a setter choice and we could buy some time, get you some meters so you could manually read those meters. I mean, we, I think we could put that as in a change order possibility request and include that. And you'd be done with the five eighths by half.
It would get you started in the right direction.
So how much would the setters cost? Like would you do all of them?
Ballparks.
I'm gonna ballpark them about one eighty-five. Like I said, brass is changing, it's hard to get and it's, that price has gone from, it's gone up, what, almost twenty-five percent in the last year and a half. So I'm just ballparking it, so.
The right way to get a quote from us on that is a change order request and then we could supply that.
So essentially, though, on the five eighths by half, you wouldn't say that you've got a significant
Oh, not.
Improvement in delivery time?
About three months is what it sounds like, but we would have to do.
That's on the three quarter.
No, no, no. If, if we wanted to supply all five eighths by half, I know we wouldn't have three thousand meters for the town. So we might be able to get you by for some time until we could order. Then our lead times are probably gonna be a special order item.
They're probably gonna be right there as well.
So that, you're saying that your lead time on the meters that we would need would be.
Yeah, because a special order that.
Five eighths by half.
If you heard from them, those are a special order and it's, would be in the same boat as that, so.
But maybe five months if we, other than we'd be waiting on setters.
Correct.
That might be.
A year.
Year.
Correct.
But it's like four hundred and eighty thousand dollars if you took the one eighty-five times twenty-six hundred, that's like basic, I mean, basically four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so.
And the same with them, are we gonna get charged every time we have to have someone come in and mobilize and to do a set?
Yeah, so that's a pretty standard in the industry as well, so remobilization fee is also required.
So we really want to try to do it as much together.
With all material inside. Yeah, to reduce remobilization fees. But everything that we're speaking of is not to be taken as fact. We would want to present that in a proper quote underneath the guidelines of a, of a no collusion, no estimates, and a proprietary bid response.
Now, I think we're basically just looking for timelines on what fits.
Understood.
System, so, and we're basically at the same timeline, it sounds like.
Are there any other questions for UTS? All right. Thank you, guys, for coming up.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So item eleven is discussion and action regarding, regarding the continued acceptance or revocation of the option A bid from Corin, Maine for the City of Alba Water Meter Project. I'll just, and I think Drew can weigh in here. The only reason this was brought back to city council is the possibility that there would be a a significant change in delivery time had we accepted the other option. I'm not gathering that there would be a significant difference. I maintain that there's probably still no significant difference in the delivery time from option A to option B. It would be my recommendation, and I think legally, we would probably have trouble if we did anything other than this, but you already approved the bid with the Neptune, Neptune system under the information that we had that the delivery time would be roughly the same. We're not looking at any other changes. Both companies still met all the other bid requirements that we had. I, and, and you already took into consideration the price difference in the two bids when you made the decision in December. Drew, I don't know what your opinion is. I don't feel like we can take any interaction with the information we've received.
Yeah, you've already accepted the bid. Now, the contract hasn't been signed, right? But, but other than that, you guys have already accepted the bid, so.
I think the original thinking still spans. And really, there's no, no variation just because there's no timeline change. So our original chain of thought still is in place.
I think legally speaking, you're probably best to leave with what you've already accepted. Would be my suggestion.
So when do we start paying interest on the bond or?
We won't start paying any interest until the, the money is, is drawn. So none of this jeopardizes our, our, our note with OWRB. None of this jeopardizes our loan forgiveness with DEQ. It, it means we won't have any costs this fiscal year related to the note. It'll all come in, you know, once we start paying, once we have bills to pay and then we'll borrow the money down. And once that happens, then we'll, we'll start at current interest.
Mainly look at, though, that still, basically, we're gonna get a million dollars loan forgiveness that can only be used for this type of project. As we're looking at anything over that million dollars as far as actually what our cost is.
Well, and that, and that's set. I mean, we accepted the bid, it's.
Yes, but I'm just, I'm beside it too. We're getting, we're getting a huge discount for that million dollars forgiveness.
We'll, I mean, we'll, we'll continue to, we're gonna have to continue to read meters until we get the new system in. We're probably gonna see that, you know, list go from thirty pages to, to more. That's kind of the boat we're in. So. I, unless somebody wants to make a motion, we'll move on.
Won't feel like we need to.
Okay. Well, I, I do appreciate all of you guys coming up to Alba again and, and helping to make sure that our council has all the information they need to, to make the decisions that are, they feel are best for our community. And we'll look forward to getting this project started eventually, so.
We have three hundred plus stores. We'll call them back east, trying to find some for anything we can do. And as far as that, if we do have to implement two hundred, three hundred, that cost would be on the estimate on a new bid.
Okay.
They install, so you're not gonna get new mobilization fees. Okay, that'd be interesting, yeah. We'll set and sort that. But we can call back east and get, I know that they've got over stuff, so they should, they might have some just as well. So we will, of course, we want this in as soon as possible. We don't, you know, in the good days, we got them in in ninety days, hundred and twenty days with a system your size. So, yeah, it's, we're all struggling, we apologize. But we will get everything implemented as soon as possible.
And I will say that if there is, because there, the, the bid package did include liquidated damages, but that starts from the date that they start. So if they have to mobilize multiple times, we'll have to adjust that. I would imagine you would want us to adjust that. We'd love to hold you to it.
But I can use that pressure on the manufacturer too. So those are just things that.
Pressure away.
Yeah, because, so I've discussed it with my superiors and with the Neptune headquarter manager. They've assured me they're gonna get a push through, so hopefully we can do better. That's, that's my goal.
It's our intent.
So you're our top priority on that.
Appreciate you.
I agree, we're the only one with that meter, so.
Yeah, we're the only priority.
Just out of curiosity, other than the quickness that we can get them with the more common size, are they also cheaper since there's more production? Same size regardless?
Same thing, but yours is the same for those.
You actually had, I think, three on the bid, and it was standard size, and the twenty-six hundred and something at the, at the same price.
Same price. All right, fair, just enough.
I just time to start planning to get with the times and meter sizes.
Well, you're one, I think, that's still be around there twenty years, so.
I think so. I'll take some notes.
Drake will still be here.
I'll have a.
I hope you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Drive safely.
Item ten? No, I haven't. Well, I did read a, did I read eleven?
No.
Well, item eleven is discussion and action regarding the continued acceptance or revocation of the option A bid from Corin, Maine for the City of Alba Water Meter Project. There is no action to be taken there. Item twelve, discussion and action to accept the option B bid from UTS for the City of Alba Water Meter Project in the amount of one million, two hundred seventy thousand dollars for meter installation. Contingencies and fees, there's no action to be taken there. And item thirteen is discussion and action to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash one, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, that's twenty twenty-three annual budget for the City of Alba, Oklahoma. That budget resolution is in your packet, was in your packet. It is, this one in particular deals with unbudgeted revenue for the library grant, fire department grant. And it also identifies in our budget the transfers that are intended for the airport, whereas the current budget, those aren't specifically identified. They're, we do them, but it's not identified in the budget. This puts them in the budget. And the transfers to the Economic Development Authority for swimming pool donations. There was not a revenue item for the Economic Development Authority for swimming pool donations. This adds that and allows the transfer from the general fund to the Economic Development Authority where Parks and Recreation is, is under that budget.
Does this account for, as far as the, the transfer to the airport of those monies, does it account for the additional funds above and beyond that will be transferred or have been transferred? Or are we gonna be addressing this again in the future?
This will have, the, the actual, this just takes into account what we were budgeting to transfer. Which is, is the amount of the payment that was established in the amortization schedule. This does not include, and we will have. This does not include, and we will have to address later, the additional movement of funds to satisfy all of the airport debt. So, this, when this was prepared, we didn't yet have the end of the December finances, finance reports. And so, it only takes into consideration the amount that was in the amortization schedule for the airport payment plan.
But because we're paying more now to get it done.
This does not take that into consideration.
So, we'll have to have another amendment. And that's what I wanted clarification on.
Yes.
I would motion to approve resolution 2023-1.
I'll second. Have a motion from Mr. Winters, second by Dr. Lahr, to approve resolution number 2023-1 amending the fiscal year 2022-2023 annual budget for the City of Alva, Oklahoma as presented. Is there any further discussion?
I was just going to ask this because I was under the impression the pool donation was then being handled by the Freedom Call, Kate Ankers charitable group? And that's where most of those donations were being handled through and not through the general?
Those are the large donations that are taxed to, like, if they want tax credit. And then any smaller donations from their fundraisers went into its own pool account. Like, we have a checking account for just the pool. But now that we've created this Parks and Recreation Board, they need to have that on their side so we can have a budget line item so once the pool is built, then they can also add, like, employees, maintenance, and all that.
So, this will be taking that money and then assigning that to the newly formed outfit?
It's already assigned to the pool. It's just taking it out of the general fund and putting it in the Economic Development Authority.
And it's been recorded as its own checking account, though.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I just didn't know, is this part of what the $500,000 donation pool received, or is that in the Freedom West?
That's Freedom West.
Okay, so this is an addition.
Is it, do we move it?
Well.
No, that's what Freedom West.
Is it safe to say that there's just under a million raised for the donation? Like, I can add just under $400,000 to that $500,000?
This is, I don't want to have all that. That's not part of this item. This item is to move what's already in the general fund and moving it to the Economic Development Authority. There have not been any other donations received for the pool that have not gone to the general fund. It's all gone to the general fund. It is in a separate checking account.
Okay, so that's what.
It's in a separate checking account, but that checking account will be moved under the Economic Development Authority. And that's what this does.
Okay.
There will also be additional budget amendments when we, you know, get toward the end of the year and know how many donations have actually been received for that. But this takes everything that has been put into our checking account, and that entire checking account is moving underneath the Economic Development Authority.
Okay. And that checking account is comprised of donations that people have given to the City of Alva through the pool?
Either whether they gave them directly to the City of Alva, or whether they gave them through Freedom West, and Freedom West gave them to the City of Alva.
Okay.
All of the above. I have a motion from, again, I got a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
Brooks?
Upstate.
Item 14 is discussion in action to approve resolution 2023-2 amending the fiscal year 2022-2023 annual budget for the City of Alva. This one reclassifies swimming pool-related revenues and expenses that have been already incurred and are part of our financial reports in the general fund. We have had expenditures related to the pool with the engineering and whatnot. We have also had interest income and that sort of thing. And this takes care of those items and moves them to Fund 55. This is where Fund 55 takes them. The last one was where Fund 10 moved them. This is where Fund 55 takes them. We'll be approving this one as well in the AEDA, I believe.
I have a motion to approve resolution 2023-2.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Estelling to approve resolution 2023-2 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Bear?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item 15 is discussion in action to approve resolution number 2023-3 amending the 2022-2023 annual budget for the City of Alva, Oklahoma. This one is the one that identifies or allows for the identification of airport revenue for the monies owed from the general fund. The first one was to have it as an expense for the general fund. This one is to have it as revenue for the airport fund.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution 2023-3.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Stelling to approve resolution number 2023-3 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item 16 is discussion in action to approve ordinance number 2023-001 amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 2, Section 2-129, changing the limitation on the terms of office for the business manager from two years to a period of time as determined by the council. As we've had in previous discussions regarding the potential interest to approve a business manager contract of greater than two years, our ordinances restrict that. We're getting ready to have an executive session where we discuss the business manager contract. If there is any interest in discussing a contract of greater than two years, we would have to amend our code of ordinances. Voting, you know, approval of this amendment would allow the council, at each time they select a business manager, to determine the term of service for that. Voting against this amendment would keep things just as they are and limit the business manager to the two years. So, I think this, this should be a standalone thing. We either believe that we should be able to negotiate longer terms, or we don't believe we should be able to negotiate longer terms. And that's why this is on here.
Why was two years originally chosen to begin with?
Wasn't around.
Is it a safeguard or, I mean?
I wasn't around. I'm not going to speculate on why they chose two years.
I'm going to say that logically, I don't feel like it makes, really doesn't make any sense. We have the right to terminate with cost for at any point, even under an agreement. In this case, you know, we have options of, you know, including things like severance and whatnot within the contract, but we still have the right to terminate under a contractual agreement, so.
Two years probably common.
It's in line with the elections.
We also have composition changes every two years, so.
I have looked up some of the surrounding towns like Cherokee, Enid, Fairview. I couldn't get Woodwards to pull up, but those three have no term on theirs. They leave it to the council to decide.
I like that flexibility. You don't set that law personally.
I can't, I can't think of a good reason for a two-year term. Frankly, I think it has the potential to discourage somebody from wanting to take the position because very easily their contract is not renewed after an election. That's discouraging us, someone to take a job.
My statement was more basically, probably once this was adopted, that they just boilerplate it in. It might have been common. Terribly, I don't know that it was specifically addressed.
Whenever.
The city adopted this for two years, it might just been.
Part of the original boilerplate?
Yes, common, a common term, so. And times change. There could have been a safe, I think it's probably a safeguard, though. You know, you get to do counsel.
I don't know. I kind of question the logic that says we should change the law because we don't have a specific reason why it shouldn't be that way. You know what I mean? Like, if we change this, we will agree that we would want a business manager that doesn't want to abide by the current laws of our municipality.
But I think what Daniel.
That's not what this does.
Yeah, but I think what Daniel was saying is it does deter.
It says we can negotiate a one-year, two-year, 10-year, whatever, whatever the council deems appropriate in the circumstances.
The current order says it can only be two years.
Yeah, but I think Daniel made a good point, that I think it does deter a lot of people. Like, I wouldn't, if you're only guaranteeing me two years, I wouldn't leave my job at Northwestern for two years.
But like, if you went into that field knowing that's pretty common, I mean, it's policies and politics generally, when there's a change in the office, people get changed.
And every position I've held to, I've always been told by my person that it takes at least 12 to 18 months to even just learn your job to where you're not feeling like you're drowning. So, then if we, you know, at two years, you're finally getting the hang of it, and then, oh, well, your contract's up, we just don't feel like it, when you know that maybe there's more potential for somebody, oh, we could probably give them four or five years and be confident in that. I mean, you can usually tell in an interview process that, what you want to offer those people.
This does not prohibit, approving the amendment does not prohibit this council from negotiating a two-year contract.
It certainly makes it more likely, though.
It makes it possible to do that. Set the whim of whatever the council decides.
I mean, hopefully, we won't keep rotating city managers every two or three years.
No.
I mean, that's the ultimate goal because we really need one.
I think the city manager is a position where you know what you're getting into, and you know you got to hit your feet, the ground running. And I don't think we should necessarily tolerate a business manager that doesn't see it that way. I think if we have the right business manager that believes he can do the right job, he's going to look at that and say, oh, I can handle that. I don't need four years to figure it out. I can do it in two.
But I think, I think as Daniel said, you still have the right to terminate someone if they're not doing their job. I mean, it's not like we're just saying, well, they're locked in for five years if that's what we agreed to, and we just can't ever get rid of them for that five years.
That's not the case.
There's still termination clause in their contract.
You're right. I guess I would just fear that by removing an amendment like this, it would encourage us to add contractual language that might encourage them to stay longer than two years based off of severance packages.
I mean, we can't just add language to it.
Is that a problem? I mean, is it a problem to want to retain your staff?
If we had a really good business manager, wouldn't you want one?
I mean, every corporate business in America's goal is to retain staff because the cost of turnover is significantly high. We've gone a year without, almost a year without a city manager.
Look how much it doubles down.
I, yeah, for free. I'm sorry, but to encourage, the turnover of staff is counterproductive and counterintuitive, and it's absolutely asinine. I'd motion to approve ordinance number 2023-001.
So, you see no room that we can improve the work environment so they stand on? The only way is to promise them more money and additional fees.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters, and I have a second from Mrs. Beard to approve ordinance number 2023-001 amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 2, Section 2-129, changing the limitation on the term of office for the business manager from two years to a period of time as determined by the city council. Now, is there further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Brooks?
Upstate.
Dowling?
No.
Stelling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Okay. This doesn't, that item did not contain an emergency clause, so it will not go into effect for 30 days after publication. So, item 17, discussion in action to enter into executive session pursuant to 25OS 307B1 to discuss business manager contract.
I make a motion to enter into executive session.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Beard, a second by Mr. Winters, to enter into executive session. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Okay, I'll ask the council members, legal counsel, and clerk to remain. Anybody else we need? We'll call you in in a little bit.
Number 19. We have to start catering.
We are going to return from executive session now. Number 19 is discussion in action regarding business manager contract. We do not have action to take at this time, but we did have a productive conversation. So, we'll be scheduling another meeting and agenda item to keep this going, so. Item 20 is new business. I don't believe we have anything meets qualification for new business. 21 is remarks and inquiries by council members. Being none, we are adjourned. Okay. I'll call to order the regular Alva Utility Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Lahr?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action of the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of a regular meeting of December 19, 2022. Item B, approval of the minutes of a special meeting of December 27, 2022. Item C, approval of claims in the amount of $154,250.15 and payroll expenses of $56,376.76.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Mr. Stelling to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item 5 is discussion in action regarding the continued acceptance or revocation of the option A bid from Corin Maine for the City of Alva Water Meter Project. There is no need to consider that item. Item 6 is discussion in action to accept the option B bid from UTS for the City of Alva Water Meter Project in the amount of $1,270,000 for the meters, installation contingencies and fees. There's no need to consider that item. Item 7 is new business. Again, there's no, nothing that meets the standard for new business. Item 8 is to adjourn, so we will adjourn. And I'll call to order the regular Alva Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Lahr?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action of the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 19, 2022. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $33,968.81 and payroll expenses of $13,682.53.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling, a second by Mr. Winters, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.